This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice that this meeting was provided to The Home Use Tribune, The Star Ledger, and The Highland Park Planet on January 8th, 2025, and was posted on Borough Hall website at www.hbborough.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my right and left of council chambers. Mrs. Bernstein, can you lead us in the congratulations?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. And to your public, which is one nation, united, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Mayor Foster.
Yes.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Councilmember Pistone.
Here.
Councilmember Vargas.
Here.
Borough Attorney Shaw.
Here.
Special Counsel Baumann.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hooker.
Here.
Honors and awards, tonight we have a special one that presentation that we're gonna do, the proclamation, and it's going to a store called From Sweet to Nuts. And I'm gonna have Councilmember Hale, because economic development falls in this bucket, and he's gonna be reading the proclamation before we do the presentation.
Plus, the number of times I've gone there for last-minute Sweet Nuts. I'm gonna bring them here. Um, here we go. Proclamation in honor of Marion Bernstein, owner of Sweet Nuts, the kosher candy and gift shop in Highland Park, presented at the Marion Borough Council meeting, March 18th, 2025. Whereas Sweet Nuts, the kosher candy and gift shop in Highland Park, owned and operated by Marion Bernstein since 2004, has served the Highland Park community for over 20 years with gift baskets, platters, party favors, for holidays, special occasions, and various corporate and family events. And whereas Sweet Nuts maintained a picturesque, brick-and-mortar shop with quaint charm in the middle of Highland Park that was warm and welcoming to its patients, and has also operated a vibrant online presence through its website, sweetsnuts.com. And whereas Sweet Nuts supported many local fundraising and community events, including having a booth at the Main Street Highland Park Fair featuring local artwork in their storefront. They have also donated countless gift baskets, gift platters, and gift certificates to local schools and organizations. And whereas Sweet Nuts has operated under strict kosher supervision of the Vod Haberobin of Raritan Valley. And whereas Sweet Nuts became known as the go-to business for important lifecycle events such as baby celebrations, bar and bat mitzvahs, engagements, etc. And whereas Sweet Nuts employed over 75 staff members over the past 20 years, teaching them essential customer service inventory and project management skills. And whereas Marion served as a strong role model of a women-owned business for many employees and customers. And whereas Marion has announced her plans to close the store at the end of March 2025 and extends her heartfelt thanks to the Highland Park community for its support and loyalty to Sweet Nuts throughout the years. Now, I there for Elsie Klafter, Mayor of Borough of Highland Park, do hereby recognize and thank Marion Bernstein and her staff for their stellar record of service to the residents of the Borough of Highland Park, and wish them all the success in their future pursuits. In witness thereof, I hereby set to my hand the 18th day of March 2025. Seven dollars. And the rest, thank you very much.
I also. Also want to say that I was there when the official ribbon was cut 20 years ago to welcome you into Highland Park, and you have been a tremendous resource for the entire town and myself included. When I don't know what's the appropriate gift to give, I always run down and say, "Help me." And you've always helped me to find the appropriate gift. So you have been the godsend and a resource to our town. Thank you and all the best. We have a little proclamation. Councilmember Hale, would you like to present? Back to the microphone. Back to the microphone. We wanted to be recorded. It's a part of the official history.
This will truly honor. Really, I love Highland Park. It's been my home away from work. Thank you, Mayor Foster, and to the Highland Park Council for this incredible honor and mere touch. Thank you to my wonderful husband, Mike, and to our amazing family for all your love, support, and lots of help over the years. Much thanks to the Highland Park community, our loyal customers, our stellar employees. We've had fabulous, fabulous employees. And to the Vod of Raritan Valley. This has been an incredible, special, and rewarding experience for all of us and as a small business owner in Highland Park in this great town. And I must say that this was a sweet representation of shopping local. We have to shop local. It's important, and the value of shopping local is tremendous. And I thank you.
Continuing on, we're gonna have approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve minutes from February 18th, 2025 regular session and from March 4th, 2025 regular and executive session as distributed?
Seven seconds.
Roll call. Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Cho Han.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistone.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
And Council Record, I'm gonna start up the Councilmember Vargas.
Hi, everybody. My name is. My name is Nomaya Vargas, and I have the honor of chairing Parks and Recreation of the San Antonio City. This afternoon, I had the pleasure of attending a delightful luncheon at the community center to celebrate St. Patrick's Day and Irish-American heritage. The event was well-attended, as was, and as always, the community center staff went above and beyond to ensure everything was beautifully arranged, delicious food, and live music. It was a wonderful experience meeting new residents of Highland Park and reconnecting with familiar faces. The Arts Commission is excited to introduce a new initiative called FLAG, which stands for a Free Little Art Gallery. This concept is similar to the idea of the free little library, but instead of those, the gallery will teach your art. The artwork is free for the public to take home or to contribute their own creations. And I'm eager to see the first few flag installations around town. And I'll announce those locations as soon as they get this going. And also I'd like to invite you to the closing ceremony of Windows of Understanding, which will be held at the library on Wednesday, March 26th, at 5:30 p.m. This event will celebrate the collaboration of artists from San Francisco TV Center and the Pride Center of New Jersey, and I hope you can join us to honor the artwork and creativity. The artwork is still up in the bright windows if you want to take a look at it. A couple of weeks ago, I had the privilege of visiting Burrow School to read to a group of 40 graders. The book I read was What Do You Do With An Idea by Koby Yamato, a powerful story about the potential of ideas. The students asked thoughtful questions, raising from my hobbies to how the town operates, how old I was, to whether I knew the governor, and even what I wanted to be when I was a child. I shared that I once aspired to be a teacher, which while not my career path, allowed me to emphasize the importance of teachers in shaping the future of the students and their need to support education. After the reading, I was able to walk with the students to the art class, and on the way, one young girl asked me where I was born. When I told her I was born in Puerto Rico, her eyes lit up, and she asked if I spoke Spanish. And I responded, "Si, yo no soy Norto." And her excitement was palpable. She began speaking to me in Spanish right away, and we had a really nice dialogue. So we had a brief conversation. But in that moment, I understood how meaningful it is to feel represented. It wasn't just about the language, but the connection we felt instantly. And I could tell that she walked away feeling very, very happy that she felt someone like herself. Representation can come in many forms, through language, background, or even shared ideas and goals, which was the point of the book I read to the class. And that is my report for tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Representation matters. Councilmember Hale.
Thank you, Mayor. So next week, on March 25th, we're gonna be holding a Bringing Government to Your Neighborhood meeting. This is something that the mayor started bringing our meetings out into the community. So we're gonna be at River Ridge Apartments, which is 30 South Adelaide from 6:30 to 7:30. We'll be discussing downtown redevelopment as well as the state New Jersey program. And our Assemblymen Sterling and Jermaine Venechek are also gonna attend to talk about the state New Jersey program. So please, it's well open for everybody, but come on out, March 25th, at 30 South Adelaide from 6:30 to 7:30. As I mentioned, we formed an advisory committee for Third Street Plaza, and we had a very productive first meeting with that. And with the input of the community members and business owners, we're able to narrow down the list of landscape design consultants, and we'll be interviewing them in the next couple of weeks. It's really exciting to see some significant progress happening on the South Third Plaza. We have a lot of great firms to choose from, and so please stay tuned for that. As we say goodbye to Sweet Nuts, I just wanted also to know that there is a whole bunch of new businesses and moving around going on in Highland Park. As we already said, shopping local is fundamental to keeping Highland Park running. So I just wanted to mention a couple of those. Me Too is a new tea and flower shop down between Second and First on Raritan. The Grill House is a kosher meat place, also right next door. McKenna's Gym has moved to a new location over behind the Dunkin' Donuts down there first. Bloom Hair Coloring, which got rave reviews from a couple of our members, so much that I might cry. Oh, wait. Never mind. They're moving into part of McKenna's old spot right here on Raritan. We have Serenity Studios, which is a health and wellness spinal feedback shop up on 85 Raritan. And the Drum Ball Perp Please Jerusalem Pizza has received all the approvals necessary to open. Hopefully, they'll be open shortly after Passover. So fantastic for that. But stay tuned. So as we've got some businesses moving out, hopefully we've got a lot more moving back in. So please, please shop local. It's important. As always, the farmer's market is open Fridays from 11 to 4, so come on out for that. Remember that the 5K and the street fair is gonna be on Star Wars Day, May 4th, in the 4th of February. Porch Fest is May 18th. And downtown planting days are May 22nd and 23rd. So lots of great stuff coming up for the summer. You can check out all of those things at MainStreetHP dot com. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hirsch.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sweet Nuts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service to Highland Park.
Thank you so much.
And make your home a little sweet. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I show the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee. Thanks for being here. There's some exciting stuff on your report. I think I will participate in all of it. Excellent. But, oh, wait, because Councilman Hale is representing 1986 on the recommendation of the mayor. On the, it's sunny out, you know, we have to smile, we have to laugh. The world, the baseball is going. Exactly. So on the agenda tonight, you'll see item 12P. I just wanted to flag that one. On the Recommendation of Public Works and Public Utilities Committee, we have a resolution on the agenda to endorse Assembly Bill 4696 and its Senate counterpart, 3545, otherwise known as the New Jersey Climate Superfund Act. This bill comes at the recommendation of Sustainable Highland Park, who was headed by the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee, and Sustainable Highland Park under the leadership of past Chair Tina Wyshouse, who recognizes that this legislation is a top priority for the state's environmental movement that empowers the state to collect on the damages caused by climate change by large fossil fuel corporations that do business within our borders. The bill, modeled after laws passed in New York and Vermont, has 26 legislative cosponsors across the Assembly and the Senate, including our own Senator Patrick Fagin and Assemblyman Robert Karabanshak. The Senate version passed out of the Environmental Committee on December 12th, and I'm sorry, in December, and 12 municipalities statewide have passed resolutions in support of this bill. And now Highland Park, hopefully with our vote, is going to be lucky 13. We no longer have to envision what a world affected by climate change looks like or feels like. We see the impact of most of your storms and flooding. You see the sun peeking through an opaque sky clouded by distant and not-so-distant wildfires. We breathe the particulates that cause respiratory illness, cancer, and so much more. This is something our seniors, youth, and persons experiencing homelessness, and so many more are already familiar with, particularly in environmental justice communities. With uncertainty at the federal level, it's essential that we act as states to advance strong environmental stewardship initiatives. And I'm proud to advocate for this as part of a growing chorus. So thank you for your consideration, Council. Just a few things to report from Public Works. Our monthly report is in. Thank you to Frank Troy of Public Works for providing these numbers. To date, this year alone, the Public Works has collected 563.72 tons of garbage collection delivered to the Middlesex County landfill. Recycling to date, year to date, is 165.03 tons, and that does get recycled. I've said it here before, there seems to be a kind of a vexing myth out there that recycling does not get recycled. It does, and it goes to the Colgate Paper Company over in New Brunswick. We'd love to arrange a tour with you if you ever wanted to go. We've done, we've signed business with our environmental commission, and it's really interesting. And it's interesting to see how, you know, how recycling is processed. Public Works also did 33 signs. They repaired or replaced 33 signs. They serviced and repaired 16 vehicles. They used almost three tons of hot-mix asphalt used for pothole repairs in 23 potholes built. So hopefully that pothole that you're avoiding is no longer there. If you see a pothole, though, don't wait for it to be filled. Please report it. You can go to www.hbborough.com and report a pothole, or you can reach out to any of us. And Public Works does the sign Wednesdays as pothole repaired. I also want to point to Resolution 12A, which is from the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee, authorizing the purchase of Ford F-450 multi-use vehicle for Public Works. So that's really exciting and much needed. This Thursday, March 20th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the community room of the library, join us for a meeting on gas leaf blowers, health risks, and alternatives. This event is sponsored by a Highland Park Gas Leaf Blower Task Force. It borough-sponsored ad hoc committee, including the Board of Health, the Environmental Commission, and Sustainable Highland Park. I'm hearing from experts, members of Sustainable Highland Park, and me, talking about other municipal ordinances. That's this Thursday, March 20th, at the library at 7:00 p.m. A little PSA, I wish I had the more-you-know graphic kind of shining behind me, but we did want to raise an issue raised by Public Works. So-called flushable wipes are a costly and damaging issue facing our town sewer system. Despite the packaging claims, these are not flushable. So please, never put wipes down the toilet like toilet paper. Instead, they can cause blockages in household plumbing. They can cause municipal, they can clog municipal sewer lines, and they can lead to expensive repairs that impact every taxpayer. Unlike toilet paper, which disintegrates quickly in water, wipes remain intact for a long time, accumulating in pipes and mixing with grease and other debris. And they form massive blockages. And they can cause, and they can really wreak havoc on older homes, older sewer lines. So please, use every precaution to only dispose of toilet paper in your toilet. And I'm really glad I got to deliver that news, too. It's really important, though. I did want to point to something that, you know, was near and dear, I think, to all of us, and it would have affected the portfolios of Councilman George, myself, and probably all of us in some way is, you know, Highland Park is not immune to Elon Musk. We're not immune to Donald Trump. We're not immune to Doge. And the million dollars in federal funding that Congressman Frank Pallone secured for us from re-engineering Benetton Magnolia is no more. And it was unceremonious, it was an unceremonious withdrawal. But that was part of it. We had got chopped. And that was part of the, that was part of the bill that passed. That was part of the continuing resolution that passed that passed Congress. So all those earmarks in New Jersey, all those community projects that were going to benefit their communities, we will have to find other ways to finance them, particularly at the same, right now, you know, at the state, the state is gonna throw us a bit's budget cycle right now. So there's a lot of work to figure out how to reconcile state budget, municipal allocations, with the loss and uncertainty at the federal level. I'm gonna be in Washington, D.C. next, actually, I'm gonna segue to this in a second. I did just want to finish on Sustainable Highland Park. They will hold a regular meeting next Wednesday, March 26th, at 7:30 on Zoom. I will not be there. Here's why. I'm gonna be away for work in Washington, D.C. to advocate for federal housing dollars for affordable homes. We are not polygamy, and certainly don't think that, you know, that there is enough support in Washington, D.C. to support a lot of the things that are so important to us on a daily basis. Cuts to HUD, cuts to housing resources, cuts to the VA. It's really deep-funding. The federal government is alarming. It puts a lot of people at peril, and we have not begun to feel the effects. What we do know right now, and the reason why I held it up as an example, is that the engineering of Benetton Magnolia, two roads that fit really well into our bicycle and pedestrian plan, in order for bike lanes, purification, and slowdown in traffic there, is not happening right now. And that is real, real shame. And I think we can all just kind of reflect on the loss and figure out how we move forward under this new environment. So that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember George.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Phil George, Council Liaison to Public Safety, Police, Fire, EMS. Our search team. To follow up on Councilman Hirsch's comment, I ask a simple question. If we're saving all this massive amounts of money because we've cut most of our government apart, will your taxes be reduced next year? I don't think so. That being said, wonderful news from the Police Department. Clarabel Peralta will be joining us. Today was her first day as a new police officer. She comes to us from Apologize, Prairie Way, where she's already a seasoned officer by legal. Her interview was phenomenal. She chose to come to Highland Park because of her interest in community policing, being part of the neighborhood and life in the vibe of town, and we welcome her. Here's a mix. Usually, you know, I report on the libraries. Well, here's the next. Last night at the library meeting, the chief, we brought in a featured speaker, the Chief of Police. The library board asked me to come in and address the library board and members of the public about some of the issues we've had at the library with people coming in protesting or challenging book selection. And actually, the whole meeting was about community policing in town and how the library fits in as a center and a hub of community life. It was a very, very interesting discussion, very lively with members of the public. The library is trying to institute a program relatively informal of inviting different members of the company body, different members of our different departments to come in and explain their connection with the library and how the library can connect with us. Very interesting program. So it was very delightful. And I just have to say, I hope that the library continues that. Finally, safe, walking, and cycling meeting again next week. On the last meeting, we discussed another bike rodeo, which was very successful last year. Hopefully, around just after the street fair in May. Hopefully, the following week. But we'll work out the dates and times with the borough and with the Police Department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Foster.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Jason Stellic. I'm the Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee, and I would report for tonight. First, the measles outbreak growing. The Board of Health wanted to remind everyone of the importance of getting the MMR vaccine, and it wants to urge everyone who hasn't received it to get it. We are currently below the levels needed for herd immunity in our area, and it's important for everyone who is able to do their part, keep themselves and their children vaccinated, and help get this disease back under control. As a phrase that was repeated off during the last Board of Health meeting, do not want to get measles. Please reach out to your doctor with any questions and make an appointment. If you need one. Next, just want to announce that the Human Relations Commission will be meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m. There'll be a hybrid meeting taking place in person in the Fishbowl Conference Room in Borough Hall, right across from council chambers. And we'll also be meeting over Google Meet. The Google Meet line can be accessed from the Borough calendar and the Borough website, hpborough.com. And lastly, same with the Human Relations Commission. I just wanted to know that there are a number of agencies on that commission. So if anyone is interested in joining and working on cross-cultural educational programs and events that bring people together, please submit a volunteer application available on the Borough website, again, hpborough.com. And that was my report for tonight.
Thank you. Council President Kim Cho Han.
Hello, everyone. My name is Stephanie Kim Cho Han, and I chair Finance. So there isn't much to report at this time as of, all efforts have been focused on finalizing the budget. However, I would like to highlight two important items. First, the first quarter payment for water and sewer services is due at the end of this month. I do want to remind residents that the borough has established a safety net to help ensure that you never miss a payment deadline by implementing the auto-pay feature. When residents access online bill pay through the borough's website, you will have the option to enroll in auto-pay. But we're still traditionally, you can come in at the office and here at the window to pay if you also choose to. Secondly, the Rent Control Board will be meeting next Thursday, March 27th, and here in council chambers at 5:30. And as a final note, spring is just around the corner, so stay safe everywhere.
Thank you, Councilmember. Borough Administrator reports.
Just an extremely quick one, Mayor. I just thought I'd report out. I heard from Mike, our superintendent at Public Works, that we have changed the controller at Madison in Cleveland. So hopefully, we'll have less vibrant blinking lights during the evening months. We're still figuring out exactly the controller, so we may make further adjustments. But just be advised, I know that was something that came up at a key meeting, and that's all that happens.
Thank you. Borough Attorney's report. Borough Attorney Shaw. For Attorney Baumann.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I'd like to speak briefly on item 12P on our concern agenda. So you'll recall that the W body authorized the preparation of a study on whether blocks 1704, blocks 43, 46, and 49 constitute an condemnation in an area in need of redevelopment. That study was completed, referred to the planning board. The planning board reviewed it and took action and had referred to the PAC recommending that it does meet the criteria. This is a property that has been, we've been in dialogue with its property owner for about eight years, and the adoption of this resolution will not stop that process. Even though the resolution includes the word "condemnation," my experience is that if it ever happens, we fully expect and hope that at some point, we're gonna come to an agreement with the property owner. Again, we've been in dialogue with them for almost six or seven years. I'll be very hopeful that we'll be able to resolve that issue. But in the meantime, it did meet the criteria. The planning, the planner concluded that, the planning board agreed. And now it's back on your plate to consider officially designating it as an redevelopment with condemnation.
Thank you. And now it's time for my report. And I'm pleased to announce that I also attended the St. Patrick's Day Luncheon over at the Community Center. And I have my proof because I have my, my St. Patrick's Day necklace to prove that it was a great luncheon and didn't do the jig, but I'm quite sure everybody had a great time. They enjoyed the meal. And also, when I say, speaking of seniors, I received a letter from the Greater Minnesota County Meals on Wheels. And this year marks 53 years of Meals on Wheels providing much-needed nutritious meals to our seniors. Currently in Highland Park, we have 40 seniors that participate in Meals on Wheels. And I was given the task of calling five seniors to see if they're interested in joining the program, which I started making my phone calls, and I spoke with one delightful senior this afternoon. And she says, save it for someone else. Now, I thought it was so awesome that people would be considerate to others that may not have, may have a greater need. And she says, at this time, I don't need it, but Mayor, please do save it for someone else. So I'm going to be adding someone else to my list for Meals on Wheels to see if there's a need in their home. So it's a great program, and I hope it will continue to thrive. I also want to announce that it's that time of year again, and it's Borough Highland Park Park Partners Grant, Park Partners Grant 2025. So we, either Mayor and Council invite you to come out. And if you're interested in participating, the grant, come out and give our, give you, give us your ideas. Here are the categories. Category one is environment, the other is to arts, cultural diversity, safety, universal access, health and wellness, and Highland Park High School student class slash club projects. So anyone who's interested in applying for this grant, the application deadline is May 13th at 1:00 P. M. You can start applying now. So the announcement will be made at the Community Center on May 18th from 1:00 to 4:00 P. M. And all borough residents aged 13 and up are eligible to apply. And we want to see when we make the votes. So come on out. How much is the grant for? It's for $2,000. So if you have a great Highland Park project that fits into any of the five categories that I, that I spoke about, please do take a moment to come out and participate in the grant, see if you're a lucky winner. And how do you access the grant? Go to our website. And it's go to the Borough Hall website, and it's called tinyurl.com. So it's H T T P S backslash backslash tinyurl.com slash four two seven two two Z as in zebra dot D. A. So, or if that's too much, just reach out to our Public Information Officer, Harry Glazer. And he can be reached at hglazer@hpborough.com to drop off your application or to get an application. And remember, the deadline is May 13th, so please do come out and participate and help shape our town and make our town better because these grants have been doing fantastic work through the years. All right, so that was my report. So at this time, it's our time for first public participation. Total time is 21 minutes, three minutes per speaker, limited to the items on this agenda. Comments from members attended in public will be heard first, followed by those attending on Zoom. So any member of the public who wishes to speak can do so now.
There we have six attendees. Oh, I take it back. I have a hand up.
Okay.
Rosella Sabatini. Will you say your name to confirm it's you?
Yes, hi there. This is Rosella Sabatini.
Hello.
Hello. I, I'm a resident from South Second Avenue. I've been in Highland Park for about 30 years now. I also am an activist with the Food and Water Action of Central New Jersey Group. And we are, I'm wanting to just speak on support of the Climate Superfund Act that Matt Hirsch earlier mentioned. I just want to voice strong support for it and also share, there was a development just recently. The State Assembly actually voted to adopt, pass the resolution as well. So sorry for my voice. I actually caught a cold because I attended that meeting along with 100 other activists in Trenton last Monday. We had people from across the state joining us to let the Assembly know how much support there is for this bill. As a resident here in town and as a taxpayer, I am definitely concerned about the ongoing costs of climate impacts on Highland Park, having lived through Superstorm Sandy and seen many other flooding events. Excuse me. So I am, hopefully will witness Highland Park being a green community, seeing a positive adoption of this resolution, and I thank you for your time.
Anyone else? No other hands up, Mayor.
Seeing there's no other mayor, I have a motion to close public participation.
So move.
Second. Is it on this agenda?
Yes, yes, it was about the same item, actually. I didn't realize earlier that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We normally have the members of the public speak first and then, then goes on Zoom and then we close out, but go ahead.
Thanks. Okay, so my name is Chen Yan. I live at Walter Avenue. And yeah, I'm just here to also express my support for the super fund resolution. I hope the passing it here will help the momentum for the uterus, et cetera. So thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, Mayor, I have a motion to close public participation.
So move.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Chouhan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonic.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Ordinance required first reading. Clerk, please report on ordinance introduction of ordinance number 25 dash 2105.
An ordinance amending and repealing Part Two General Legislation, Chapter 150, Contracting Reform, Article One, Redevelopment Agreements, Article Two, Public Contracts Pay-to-Play Reform of the Code of the Borough of Highland Park has been introduced by the Administration Committee for Consideration of Passive Down First Reading by Title.
Mayor, I have a motion to adopt or reject ordinance number 25 dash 2105, authorized publication as required by law and set forth in public hearing for April 1st, 2025.
So move.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Chouhan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonic.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
And now I'm going to move to the consent agenda, and we're going to separate out 12E for any comments that anyone may have. So let's look down, go down to the consent agenda. We're going to separate, separate out 12E. And now I ask members of the council if there's anything else on the consent agenda that you would like to pull for a separate vote. Okay. Seeing that there's none, Mayor, I have a motion to adopt or reject the following minus 12E, 12A through 12H. So.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember George.
The Superfund Resolution, put it down to the street level where you are. Two studies came in last week about the pollen problem that we're having and the sicknesses and the throat problems we're having. Found out that the northern tier is experiencing a minor degree change that increases the pollen from oak and rad weed, and it increases the protein that lines that causes our infections and our throat infections. Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Thank you, Councilman George. Yes.
Council President Kim Chouhan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonic.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we're going to go to 12E, which is 3 dash 25 dash 99, resolution designated property identified on tax record of the Borough of Highland Park as block number 1704, lot number 43, 46, and 49, AKA classic cleaners, as, as condemnation as needed, needed of redevelopment, in need of redevelopment. We're in need of redevelopment. Any questions from members of the?
So now, now is comment.
Yes, now it's comment.
Um, I just.
Council President, which is to speak.
Um, I just would like to urge the business owner to actually work with the borough and as this is the tool, we still will be able to vote again down the line again for this property as well. So in, in that time, I hope we don't ever have to go down that route. But I do encourage the property owner to consider to you or and meet with the borough.
Anyone else? Okay, I just have Attorney Bowman. Can you please, again, go over what this process is?
Sure.
12E.
Sure, Mayor. I'll have you do. So I'll, I'll take it from what happens next, I think. So the next step is, is the governing body determines to approve the resolution. We'll send a copy to the property owner, and the property owner then has certain rights to object or file a challenge to the designation, which will choose not to do or do so. Following that process, we will continue to engage with conversations. If we think we need to use the condemnation power, we have to come back, as Councilwoman suggests, and ask you permission. Again, my 30-something years of doing this shows me that generally, we never get to that point and kind of hopefully work things out. I would probably add that I know, because I've worked with you now for 10 years maybe, that you don't take these decisions lightly. This is a property that 11 years ago was put on the D. E. P. list for non-contaminated site list, so 11 years ago. They moved the deadline to complete that process four or five times. We actually went and secured a grant, which is pretty unique, into tens of thousands, I think, almost 12, 15,000 dollars to assist them in doing some of the work, a step by step way. So we've been very engaged to try and move this process along for, as I mentioned, actively at least eight years, including securing funds in 2017. Was that eight years, seven or eight years ago? To try and continue to do the process. So you don't come to these decisions lightly. Arguably, this is a decade in thinking about it. And yet, you continue to leave the door open for resolution, which is your prefer, of course, in all situations. And we demonstrated that time and time again with other properties throughout Highland Park. So again, as, as Councilwoman suggests, it's just setting the stage, but a lot of work to be done. And I fully expect to have an ongoing dialogue and hopefully an improved dialogue going forward with the property owner to a successful resolution that makes everybody happy.
Thank you so much. I, I do also have another question.
Yes.
In your 30-plus years of making this, doing, and this is something that we definitely don't want to have to resort to. But in your 30-something years of working with other towns and seeing condemnation, what is the process, say for, that in towns that you have worked with, that have gone through with this? How is the property owner compensated? What is that like?
Great question there. So the way it works is we have to get an independent appraisal from a third party to determine the value of the property. We have to engage in good faith negotiations. So we send the appraisal with a letter offer, offering to purchase the property for that price. Then we go through a negotiation process by law. Could take a couple of weeks, could take months. If we are unsuccessful, then we have to, we make a filing with the courts, and we deposit the full amount into the courts. The property owner that has the right to withdraw the money and fight it out the value further, which could end in a jury trial, or the property owner could withdraw the money and, you know, accept the resolution. Once we put the money in court and, and we file with the courts, we have the right to take, to take tough to the property and sort of have a dispute over the value over time. But the property will never get less than the fair market value. Never have.
Thank you for the presentation. Now it's time for the second public participation. Oh, I'm sorry.
You mean a motion to.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, because we went over this. May I have a motion to approve or adapt 12E?
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Chouhan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonic.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
And now it's time for the second participation, public participation. Three minutes per speaker on any topic, subject to conclude at 9:00 P. M. Comments from members of the public attended in person will be heard first, followed by those attending on Zoom. Please come to the microphone, say your name, address.
Jamie Valanci, South First Amendment. I recently attended a rent control board meeting. During that meeting, the borough attorney prevented discussion of the ordinance at hand, attempted to direct the meeting, and then when she was not committed to direct the meeting, stormed out of the meeting. When she returned, she attempted to adjourn the meeting without public comment, over the objection of the board and members of the public who were there to speak. I want to be sure that I indeed heard what I thought I had heard in that meeting. So I did re-listen to the recording. At minute 32, about 22 seconds, the borough attorney said, quote, "Yeah, but I spoke to the mayor, and she wants to adjourn the meeting." About 10 seconds later, she said, quote, "But she, referring to the mayor, said she was going to adjourn the meeting, the whole meeting, excuse me." The attorney's wild overstep and disrespect of public discourse is shocking in and of itself. But there are only two possibilities in invoking the mayor in those comments as well. The first is that the borough attorney has misrepresented the mayor to the public in an attempt to support her own position. Or the mayor herself is attempting to disrupt public discourse on issues impacting the essential need that is housing. I don't see a third option here. Housing is so important, and to be unable to discuss it in public, to be unable to be transparent, and to have the borough attorney disrupt a meeting where the public has attended in order to understand how we are able to maintain our living situation in this town is really unbelievable and disrespectful.
Any additional public comment? Seeing that there's none, is there anyone on Zoom?
No, hands up on Zoom. We've got five attendees.
Okay. Seeing that there's no more, may I have a motion to close public participation?
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Hale.
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Yes.
Council President Kim Chouhan.
Yes.
Councilmember Pistonic.
Yes.
Councilmember Vargas.
Yes.
Time, I, I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Second.
Folly favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be April 1st at 7:00 P. M. Thanks. Have a good night, everyone.